Let's rise to the flag salute.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. This evening, before we begin our student and staff recognition, as we do each month, we have another presentation by the Asbury Park Juneteenth Committee, who will be recognizing two of our students. So I'll call Ms. Nina Summerlin up to the podium to do her presentation.
Evening, everybody. My name is Nina Summerlin, and I am actually the coordinator for the planning committee for Juneteenth Day. And we didn't have an opportunity to give the kids their trophies and stuff before they left, so I asked if they would give us permission to do it tonight. So Ms. Barnes is actually going to present to the kids, but I thank you guys for having us tonight.
Hi, could I ask for Nala and David to come on up here? So Nala and David wrote some two beautiful essays about what the Juneteenth holiday means to them, and also how they would have felt if they had been living in Galveston, Texas, when the news came that they were, you know, slavery had been abolished. So they wrote, they had good grade point averages. Their intention is to continue into higher learning. I think you're going to Brooklyn, to what is it, what college?
Long Island University.
Long Island University. And David, tell them where you're going.
Brookdale University. I was trained to go to Ruckish for my master's.
And he wants to be a lawyer? And you want to be a financial...
Advisor.
Financial advisor. So we are so proud of them. They represent Asbury Park so beautifully. And, you know, I had David actually in fourth grade. And he was a wonderful student then, as he is now. So we want to present you with, in total, they'll be getting $1,000 each.
Wow.
Tonight. And I have to give, you know, we did this, we initiated this with the Asbury Park Democratic Club. But Nina and the Juneteenth Planning Committee did an excellent job raising additional funds and making this happen and getting all the, you know, bling bling crowns and sashes and trophies. So it really made it nice, and we had a beautiful day. So we'd like to present, Nayla, Nala, I'm sorry, with this money. There's cash in there for you, as well as a gift card. And David, congratulations. And now, this is your blown-up essay. We had this on display on Juneteenth, and this is David's. You're welcome. So we're so proud of you. Give him a hand, please. Thank you so much. David, come back. Madam President?
We need that back. Let's go to those students. And again, thank you to the committee for doing the selection, as well as recognizing our students and providing those outstanding financial contributions to the students. We will begin our monthly student and staff recognition. So we'll start with Ms. Thea Jackson Byers, principal of Bradley Elementary School. Is your student here, Ms. Jackson? Is your student here, student? No, is your staff? Is your staff member? Okay, well, you can put, do your staff. Do your staff. No, the student's not going to make it, so you can accept them, too. All right.
Hello, everyone. At this time...
Go to the orange state, invisible orange state.
I got you. Okay, I think I can make it happen. Okay. I think it's like, it was like right here, right? Okay, good evening, everyone, and happy June and happy last board meeting for the school year. At this time, we have our preschool student. The student's name was Miss Adreu. Guys, the teacher, Ms. Archie, you can come up. Unfortunately, our preschool student, which was the student of the month, was not able to be here because they were sick, but Ms. Archie still came, and we still wanted to accept them there for behalf. So here you go, Ms. Archie.
Hello, hello. Hi, I'm Ms. Archie. I'm Andrew's teacher. Well, former teacher, because he'll be going to kindergarten in September. So I'm excited about that. But Andrew is a ray of light, and I'm so happy that he's able to receive this award because he's so deserving. Andrew, if you're watching at home, if you can see me in the camera, I just want to say, thank you for your academic achievement, your attendance, and your accountability. You're really a ray of light, and every person you cross, you bring joy. So continue to bring joy to everyone, and don't let anyone ever take your joy away. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Archie, Andrew's parent is not here, and the mom is not here. So guess what? You're going to have to accept the flowers in their behalf, yeah. And thank you for being their teacher. Next, last but not least, it is my honor and pleasure to present the Bradley Elementary School June 2023 staff member of the month, and that's none other than Ms. Katie Lee. What Ms. Katie Lee brings to the table is awesome. She is a pleasure. She has, what she has done for before and aftercare is amazing, and we love you, and thank you for always being student center. Thank you for everything, Ms. Katie. Thank you, Katie. You're welcome, Dr. Adams.
Yeah, so you can pass that to Mr. Perry Medina, the principal of the MLK Upper Elementary. Is your student here, Mr. Medina? Okay, so you'll accept on his behalf? Is your staff member here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My student of the month is a sixth grader, Orlando Herrera Perez. He is an exceptionally bright young man. He's also a great musician, plays the piano. He actually was our star performer in our winter concert. He receives As and Bs, and he is heading in the right direction. We're very fortunate to have him, and I can't wait for him to enter into seventh grade back at the middle school. So congratulations, Orlando, and we'll be accepting this on his behalf. And for our staff member of the month, and I've made this, this has been a common theme at the end of each school year, but as we, you know, do a job and as we grow a little weary and tired, it takes a lot to kind of dig deep and finish off the year strong. And this teacher here has done that every single day she has shown up. I've worked with her for several years. She is an extraordinary, good teacher, hard worker, leader, visionary, Ms. Shelley Sanders. And very happy to have her back at MLK next year.
Congratulations. We'll have Ms. O'Neil, the high school principal.
Good evening. First, I'm recognizing our seventh and eighth grade student of the month. Similar to Mr. Medina, I recognize students and staff members this month who have made an impact all throughout the school year. This young woman just graduated eighth grade. She'll be going to ninth grade with us next year in the Dream Academy. She has served on the superintendent advisory since the beginning of the year and has tirelessly advocated for her grade. She's someone who is so strong and never afraid to speak up. We are recognizing Soraya Gadsden.
Good job, Soraya.
Our high school student of the month is a ninth grader. He this year has been recognized as athlete of the month as well. He participated all three seasons in sports. He has been on the superintendent advisory committee. He's also on the principal advisory committee. He is someone who makes the right choice all of the time, no matter what is going on. And he has come up with really exciting ideas for next school year. He's been instrumental in helping us figure out that we want to start a school store and also changing our uniform policy. So tonight, we are recognizing ninth grader Sean Davis-Strick. Okay, last but not least, recognizing our staff member of the month. This person came to me, not at the beginning of the school year, but came to me at the middle, right around January, when we were starting our Pathways to Graduation program. She worked with a group of juniors and seniors who were the most critical for graduation. All needed more than six classes to graduate. They were in a new virtual program, and we were really trying to figure it out as we went. We had, of the students that we had in there, we succeeded with 94% of them reaching their goal, which is truly a testament to how hard this person worked. She nurtured all of these students. She got students to come to school that we hadn't seen from September through January, literally for the first time. She's been my right-hand lady, Ms. Watkins.
Congratulations. Ms. Hope, are you presenting for Thurgood? Are you presenting for Thurgood? You'll do Thurgood?
For Thurgood Marshall School, for June student of the month, they are recognizing Tyrone Sanders. And for teacher of the month, they're recognizing Ashonith Pinock. I'm sorry, I didn't want to mispronounce your name. Ms. Pinock, congratulations, Ms. Pinock.
Congratulations, Ms. Pinock. As you know, this time of the year, our school day, excuse me, our school year ended on Tuesday, the 20th. So fortunately, some of our students have begun their summer vacation. I do appreciate the staff that came to be recognized this evening on behalf of the leadership of your various buildings, as well as, again, thanking the community organization for coming and recognizing our students. Their picture was actually in the coaster today, I believe. So again, thank you for your continued support. I believe Mrs. Rick's board member is also a part of that committee. And so that ends my initial presentation, Madam President.
Congratulations to everyone. If you need a recap, AP-TV.
I do have one other announcement. I would like to thank AP-TV for live streaming our graduation, which took place on Tuesday, which was in the field for the first time in over a decade, besides COVID. So we do appreciate that partnership and providing that access to the community as well. So thank you.
Dr. Adams, I just wanted to say something about the graduation ceremony because it really, I mean, I've been on the board since 2017, and a few of the folks here were there. Never saw anything so, like, inspiring in terms of the kids and the students just super enthusiastic, right? Very long keynote speech, but everybody stayed the course, and I thought it was, I thought it was just fantastic. So kudos to everybody that put it together. Did a fantastic job. I hope we do it at the stadium every year.
Weather permitting.
Weather per... COVID permit.
Okay, so we're going to mix up the agenda a little bit. We are going to go into an executive session. So whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows exclusion from discussion at the open, I'm sorry, at the public portion of the meeting, a certain matters as outlined below. Whereas the Asbury Park Education, which discusses such matters made and will make such discussions public when proper conclusion has been reached. Now, therefore, that is resolved, that Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on the date, June 22, 2023, at the Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose outlined below, which is personnel managers and to receive client, I'm sorry, attorney-client advice. Call in favor?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. No formal action will be taken during the executive session. After the executive session, the board will return to this room, where we will continue the public portion of the meeting. So about 30 minutes. Thank you.
What we're going to do is, a few of the committees did not meet this month, so we're just going to skip over a few and just go over to Dr. Penna.
So I just wanted to say, because we had our committee meeting, and we went over again the transgender student policy. It mirrors the guidelines provided by the state of New Jersey and by Strauss-Esmay. And I just wanted to say what's going on in Monmouth County at other board meetings when they are not following the guidelines. Here in Asbury Park, we fully support our transgender students, staff, faculty members, and we also support everyone in the LGBTQ plus AI community, and we always will. So thanks.
We are going to go into public participation, but before we do, Adam will say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with an opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation, if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up public participation, please.
Good evening. My name is Tom Gilmore. I am the former director of commerce and the director of the Urban Enterprise Zone Program for the city of Asbury Park for 15 years and a founding trustee of the Asbury Park Music Foundation. I'm here tonight to support a request from the Trenton Circus Squad, who's bringing an event here. And I want to thank you, first of all, for letting us use your facility to host that event. After I left Asbury Park, I'm also, excuse me, I'm also a resident of Asbury Park and been here for 13 years. When I left my position in Asbury Park, I went and worked in downtown Trenton. I was the executive director of the Downtown Trenton Association and worked very closely with the Trenton Circus Squad and utilized them within many of the events that I hosted while I was in Trenton. They're a great organization, a nonprofit, and really provides an amazing opportunity for children. It's not really a circus. It's more of an opportunity for children to come out and really learn about themselves, gain confidence, and really go on to very successful things. I experienced that, we experienced that here in Asbury Park with the Asbury Park Music Foundation, where we give musical opportunities to children. And it's heartwarming to just watch exactly what happens to these children once they're given an opportunity. And the Trenton Circus Squad is coming to Asbury Park and will provide opportunities like that, game-changing things for their lives. So as we all know, in the nonprofit world, it's very difficult today to run, raise money, and also to get grants. And Tom Van Osen, who is the executive director, is stuck in traffic. He is running the Trenton Circus Squad event there in Camden right now. So he's, hopefully, get here in time so he can speak about the organization. But I just want to request that if there is an opportunity for the board here to provide some financial support in the way of some of the fees that they will have to pay to come here, we would really, really appreciate that because it is, it's a very expensive event to bring here, and everything is free in this event. We do charge a fee for some of the general public to come and see the programs, but none of the children are charged any fees. And there are many organizations like Monmouth University that's putting up the children that are coming to perform here with the organization. So I just hope that you might be able to give us some financial support. Let me make sure I said everything that I was going to. I think I have. But first and foremost, thank you very much for letting us use your facilities. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President and members of the board. My name is Michael Charles Shapiro. I'm from a resident of Hamilton, and I come as a board member of the Trenton Circus Squad to ask that the board reconsider or reevaluate the significant custodial and rental fees that are being charged or organized for our performances. As Tom mentioned, we're here from July 20 through July 30 for a series of performances and workshops for the area's youth and other members. You know, we're a small charitable organization, and we're at significant expense bringing our big top tent here to Asbury Park. The big top tent is a, it's a huge tent that's made actually by the same makers as the Cirque du Soleil tents. And we're very excited, not only to put on performances with our performance troupe, but also to have youth come and join for our workshops during the week so they can, as Tom said, experience the joys of learning circus skills and really, through that, learn about pressing upon themselves their own boundaries and what they can do. I have three minutes, so I won't go into all of the studies, but they show that children who have after-school activities that are physical and mentally stimulating, like the Circus Squad, they're less truant from school. Their grades are better. They have better outcomes as far as attendance at college or professional training. And we want, for this area's youth, what we have in Trenton. And the only way we can do that is by bringing our squad here and by showing it in action. Now, the fees that we're being assessed are $15,525 for custodial fees and a $3,000 field rental fee. And I wanted to just talk about some of the concerns that were shared by Mr. Hastings with our executive director. First, I know that the squad asked for July 11 through July 30. But performances or workshops are not being put on for that time, and so issues such as custodial waste or traffic are not a concern for that initial period. Our hope is that we'll be able to come straight from Camden to Asbury Park to leave certain materials here. But setup won't begin in earnest until potentially the 14th, 15th, maybe even the 16th, so that we're ready in time for our performances to begin on the 20th. Additionally, we're going to be responsible for bagging our own trash and waste. We would only need help with pickup. We understand that there's no facilities available in the neighboring school. We're going to be providing, as we always do, portable facilities for our own members, as well as for any attendees at the performances or the workshops. You know, as Tom also mentioned, this is all free. We're not making any profit or even breaking even off of this event. We're doing this out of our own resources in order to bring a benefit to the community of Asbury Park. We have deep ties with this community. You know, in particular, through the Lady of Mount Carmel, the Boys and Girls Club, the Sisters of Mercy. We have demonstrated a dedication to this community in the hope that one day, maybe there will be an Asbury Park Circus Squad. I'm happy to stay afterwards or to give my contact information so I could be reached to discuss this in any greater detail. Thank you.
Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jeffrey Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Longtime resident, graduate of Asbury Park High School. I'm here because to... It's disconcerting when you go on to Google, looking up certain things on your phone, when it come up that the union take a vote on no confidence on the superintendent in the Asbury Park School District. But you leave the administrator at the high school off, and that's concerning to me. Now, I'm going to think it's a black and white thing, okay? And I've been in this district, in Asbury Park, New Jersey since 1980. I'm from Alabama, so I know what it is. But it is very, like I said, it's very disconcerting. Dr. Adams, some of the stuff, I, yeah, I say, yeah, you can do better. But he's been in position for two years or less. But some of the people that come up to this podium has been in this district for 10 to 20 years. And our kids, they have been getting a paycheck. Our kids have still not read a write-off letter on that level. So that means you got paid for a job. You didn't do so, you owe the district a refund. Because maybe you could say something to other people that really care about our kids, their jobs. But I'm going to leave you with this. I come to tell you, it's not about white power. It's not about black power. It's about black and blue power, about the school district educating our kids. So I hope we can all work together, no matter what color you are, whether you're black, yellow, green, orange, purple, and with the purple dots. We need to come together as a community. Because if, guess what, if we believe in God, he's the Father, we are related. So let's get our shits together and stop playing, educate our kids. You have a good night. It's not... It's not, you know who you are. I love, but I love you, but God said I didn't have to like you, and I'm tired of it now.
So at this time... So at this time, I'll close public participation.
Yes, Madam President, we have some emails that were sent to the public comment address. First is from Randy Frucher. Hello, my family are permanent residents on the northwest side of the city. There are no playgrounds at a reasonable walking distance other than Bradley Elementary. Please unlock the playground so the kids can play. Ms. Polly Slidge. Thank you. To Asbury Park Board of Education, it has always been hard for us to understand why in a city with too few play spaces that play, school playgrounds in Asbury Park are closed after school and off limits on weekends. As a mom of six and grandparent of 13, I can attest to the importance of having accessible playgrounds. In Asbury Park, we have large and small public spaces, both no amenities for play or active social engagement. Existing playgrounds are few and far between at Springwood Park, two on the beach, and one in poor condition on Fourth Avenue. Recognizing the importance of open, active, social public spaces for physical and mental health, many cities and towns are opening school playgrounds which previously have been closed. A recent story on NPR describes schoolyard openings and renovations in Philadelphia and other cities. The trust for public land has helped transform nearly 300 schoolyards across the country. They say this can be done everywhere. When school playgrounds are closed outside of school hours, kids get a message that they don't matter after school, but when kids, when kids can play off-hours on school playgrounds fosters a positive relationship with the school itself. It's documented that when kids are welcome on school playgrounds, their in-school behavior improves, suspensions are reduced, and academic performance is stronger. The upside of opening school playgrounds are enormous. Opening public school playgrounds is a necessity and a responsibility to the kids of the community. Katie Healy, I'm a parent of two children in Asbury Park, one about to start at Bradley Elementary next year. I'm writing to request that the playgrounds at the public schools, elementary schools and middle school remain open after school hours and on weekends. Kids are still accessing the playgrounds despite them being locked, they're just doing so unsafely by climbing the gate. Asbury kids deserve places to play that are familiar, safe, and accessible. Kathleen Mama, dear members of the Board of Ed, my husband and I are residents of Asbury Park and we would like to see the recreation area adjacent to the high school open and unlocked for public use during daytime hours. Kids, teens, and adults in Asbury Park all need more safe outdoor spaces to play, exercise, and socialize. It's a shame that the track, football field are kept locked, the basketball courts are in total disarray, and the tennis court on lakefront property is used as the Board of Ed's truck parking lot. Please consider opening these facilities to the public during daylight hours. It would be a wonderful asset for the community to access. Diana Petet, dear AP School Board, I'm a resident of Asbury Park and have learned that the playgrounds at our schools are closed after hours and on weekends. Given the limited number of playgrounds and open space on the west side of town, it's vital for kids' mental and physical well-being to have these playgrounds open after hours and on weekends for them to enjoy, to get outside, be active, and play with other kids. Yes, there are two playgrounds at the beach, but they're a long walk from the west side, at least half an hour each way. Also, we residents pay for those playgrounds with our taxes and thus should be able to use them. They're part of the public good. I don't have children, but I'm of firm belief that the children of Asbury Park should have access to them. Please unlock them. Stephen Everick, dear Board of Ed, as longtime resident of Asbury Park, I feel must do everything possible to provide a healthy recreational environment for our children. One simple step is to keep the playgrounds open, especially on weekends. The benefits are clear and it costs nothing. I'm especially interested in opening up the always-locked playground at Barack Obama School. The school, of course, has been closed, so this beautiful playground is never used. Of course, I've heard various arguments for the padlocking, usually concerning some sort of liability. I do not agree with those arguments. For example, why is there an ungated playground at the corner of Fourth and Act? If grounds maintenance is an issue, I am certain that organizations such as my Kiwanis Club of Asbury Park will step up to the task. Please consider this request. Michael Kushner, I'm writing to you with a question about why the school playgrounds are locked the majority of the week except for school hours. Every time I've walked by these playgrounds after hours or on weekends, they are locked. Hardly a welcoming message to our children and even more egregious in a city with a lack of public space devoted to kids. Can we please extend the hours of the playgrounds? This is Polly again from May. As a mom of six and a grandma of 13, I know how important it is that kids and families have a place to play and space for healthy, fun, social interaction. We have unused, underutilized resources throughout the city on our locked school playgrounds. Playgrounds in AP should be open outside of school hours, weekend, weekday afternoons, weekends, and holidays. Christina Wolf, as a resident of Asbury Park and a parent of a child who will, when old enough attend Bradley Elementary, I respectfully ask that the school playgrounds be kept unlocked and accessible dawn till dusk, as is the practice by towns, cities, and counties. This is also the practice of some other APSD facilities, fields, and courts. This would be a wonderful way to increase the use and enjoyment of these facilities and to ensure their costs provide maximum benefit to the greatest number of taxpayers. Contrary to BOE responses provided in the past, there should not be any liability prohibition to expanding the hours of use. Liability is managed through general liability insurance, which the school district already carries for its facilities. It is likely that dawn-to-dusk use of the facilities is already permitted under existing policy. Towns, cities, counties across the country manage this risk without issue by carrying a very readily-available GL insurance product, including some CYA signage on their facilities. Finally, please note that the City of Asbury Park master plan is relying upon these locked playgrounds in its open space, lakes, parks, and recreation chapter. Please see Section 5 dot 2 dot, 5 dot 9, 2 dot 2D, which states, "The southwest neighborhood is served by active recreation at the Barack Obama Elementary School and Martin Luther King Junior Middle School." In some cases, capital has very recently been expended on these nearly brand-new facilities and they are permanently locked. Thank you for considering my request. Mike Krusek, hello, I'm writing to request that the playgrounds at Bradley and Thurgood remain open after school hours and on weekends. Kids are still accessing the playgrounds despite them being locked. They're just doing so unsafely by climbing the gate. Asbury kids deserve places to play that are familiar, safe, and accessible. Mr. Fruchter, please open all playgrounds for use during weekends and off-school hours. There are no playgrounds to walk to anywhere near where we live, near Bradley School. I pay taxes too. All children deserve access to play. Suzanne Marzucci, dear Asbury Board of Ed, Asbury is a unique community, a small city in the suburbs. As a parent of two young adults, I realize the importance of having a safe place to meet friends and play. When my daughters got to the age where they were old enough to go, to be out and unsupervised, the first place they would go to meet friends was the Neighborhood Elementary School where a playground, basketball court, and soccer and ballfields were located. Children need green space to hang out and play. Asbury Park is becoming a city with limited public green space. Because of this fact, all public properties should be available for community use and should include public school properties. Mark Waters, dear Asbury Board of Ed members, I find it shameful and sad every time I pass a locked Asbury Park school playground. These public spaces should be filled with neighborhood kids having fun with others. Instead, we walk around our neighborhood and don't see kids outside because they don't have a common, familiar, reliable, and accessible place, uh, place space to go to. Asbury Park should follow the lead of many communities around the country that have their playgrounds, gyms, and other recreational facilities open in the evenings and on weekends to encourage kids and parents to be healthy and active. Carrie Martin, please unlock the Asbury Park Public School Playground so kids and families can use them after school in evenings, on weekends, and during school breaks in the summer. Most families in Asbury Park live in apartments or houses with very little access to the outdoors. Playgrounds are a vital part of kids' mental and physical health. They also serve as places where kids and families socialize, get to know each other, and bridge communities. Playgrounds also need to be consistently open so that kids and families know that it's a familiar place to go to and that there will be other children playing there at the same time. I can't tell you how many times we have tried to visit Bradley Elementary Playground with neighborhood friends and have been highly disappointed to find it locked. Children growing up in Asbury Park are going to remember being locked out of the opportunity to play, exercise, and socialize in their neighborhoods. Katie Healy, I'm writing to request the playgrounds at Bradley and Element, Bradley Elementary and Thurgood remain open after hours and on weekends. Kids are still accessing playgrounds despite them being locked. They're just doing so unsafely. Asbury kids deserve a place to play that's familiar, safe, and accessible. And finally, Justice Murphy, to whom this concerns, I write this email to bring attention to the public playgrounds of Asbury Park and their current access. I am a Asbury Park native and former Asbury Park school student. I wish to address the state of our current playgrounds as a public comment and as means to help this community's parents find opportunities to be able to send their children to their local community's playgrounds without them being locked and restricted from access. May this comment be addressed and brought to the attention of the city in the following Board of Education and City Council meetings. Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, uh, those are some very defining letters about these playgrounds, you know? And I've gone by Obama and it was kind of tragic to see a brand-new playground that's sitting there with a, with a locked fence on it. And I had also had a community member ask me about the gym that's closed. And, you know, we have a vacant building and we also talked about community use. You know, I came from a city of Newark and basically all the cities, the city took a responsibility back in the day to make sure those, those things were open and maybe with recreation or what we can do. But I'd like to ask that, the, you ask the board, the attorney, what our liabilities are about taking off the fences? Also, do we have to look at security cameras? Do we have to look at what our liabilities and, and capacity of opening up these, these valuable spaces to, to the community and what other towns are doing? And I understand, you know, those liabilities because there's parks, you know, the counties have parks, and maybe we also want to look at maybe partnering with the county to help us with resources to get these back open. So if we can get a report from the attorney as to what our liability is in opening this and also talk about, do we want to reach out with the county to get resources to help us plan more active spaces and utilize these facilities? I think it is damning that we see beautiful playgrounds that, that we spent money on just sitting there abandoned.
I just want to say in regards to the playgrounds, I would say for predominantly the west side of Asbury Park, there's approximately six playgrounds. There's approximately six playgrounds for every housing, um, building, like Lincoln Village, Asbury Park Village. Each one of those have some sort of jungle gym, playground. There's playgrounds throughout the city. When it comes to the school, and I can almost understand some of the parents on this side because it's not too much for their kids to have far as playgrounds and things, but like you said, I think it's really important that we look at a lot of different things, not just the insurance, but after the summer and things, who's going, where does the money come to refurbish? Does that become an issue when it's time to pay taxes and we say, well, now we have to put down new floor, new grounds? We have to replace fences from kids climbing them. You know, I just want people to be mindful of, you know, no, no one is saying no. It's just how does it affect everyone? The district, the, the budget, taxpayers, you know? And maybe this is something that maybe the city can look at, you know, getting a playground over here on the north side as, you know, families are growing on the north side.
No, hold on, let me say something. Yeah, I don't know which one of y'all blitzed this playground thing, but this has been my stance from day one. Like, when I was growing up, there was playgrounds everywhere, there's basketball court in every school, high school, Thurgood Marshall, there's no courts anymore. And I'm telling you, that helped shape me into the man you see today. I was out of trouble, got to, you know, I mean, use my energy in positive ways, and it wasn't as much shootings and everything as there is now. Like now, before this, before these kids are 18, they already got something and, you know, you see it. But like, when we had a place where we can play, use our energy positively, and then you have adults in the community who was in, over there at these courts, they're teaching you, they're training you, you know, like, everything just came full circle. So I feel, like I said, from day one, that's been my stance to get these courts back, to get everything back to how it used to be.
I think that's fair, Mr. Remy. I think it should still be maybe something we should sit down and have a conversation with the city, you know, as far as like helping get other, you know, grounds done for families on this side of town.
Yeah, all right. Like, if it comes down to it, man, I'll help clean up.
Madam President, if I may, um, I, some of the people that made comments, I had already said something to them about the, the amount of our playgrounds and fields that are open already. As you know, the high school on the Comstock side is open. There's a gate from the back alley there that you can go and use. The fields where the baseball field and the other field is by the, by the lake. Then we have, um, the Bradley soccer field is open. And if anybody drives by now, it's open. When school's not in session, it's open until the janitors leave at night. And unfortunately, after the wear and tear of all the years it's been open now, the fence needs to be replaced and that's quite, unfortunately, and somebody actually cut a hole in the fence. So I don't know why somebody would do that when they have access to the, to the property. The whole middle school field is open. All those basketball courts over there behind the middle school, Prospect, I, I still call it Prospect Avenue, I can't get that out of my head, basketball courts. So if we are to open the young people's playgrounds, you know, at Bradley, Thurgood Marshall, and Barack Obama, we're going to need a camera, some kind of security because they're right next to the buildings and it's access to the buildings. So I think that's a, something we need to consider if that's the case.
Like, you got, you got families, all right, I'll say it like this, you got families who don't want to let their kids come to the other side of town. Like, they live on this side of town, closer to the high school, Bradley School, or Thurgood, but they scared to bring their kids to play ball at the Henry Courts. Like, you know, it's, it comes, it becomes that type of thing. So it's like, when the courts are over here, you could separate it and you could just play how you play. You could vibe how you vibe. You don't got to worry about nothing. Parents got a peace of mind, kids got a peace of mind, everybody got a peace of mind. Just have fun. But it's not like that anymore. And then now you starting to see what happens when you don't have those type of things in place. You have more issues. I know y'all Ring app go off every day. Oh, is that a lot, what was that? Like, I get that, you know, but growing up, it wasn't like that. Yeah, you know the Ring app? Was that fireworks?
Yeah, can we, can we make a suggestion that we look at all those aspects and, you know, security? And like I said, I think the county may even have dollars that will help to incentivize more active, but if we can ask the attorney to...
Well, we talk about in Buildings and Grounds, so we don't have to spend money on an attorney.
I was gonna, I was gonna recommend that. That'd go to Buildings and Grounds for discussion.
Buildings and Grounds.
And then, I can...
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
No, I'm just gonna say I'm with, I'm with Mr. Remy on this. I think it, talk in Buildings and Grounds and let's figure something out.
Can we make sure that we put that on the Buildings and Grounds agenda, Mr. Hastings, and then we'll be able to, to talk about it? Uh, the only thing I would say is, let's, we, we just had a really great meeting with the, with the city regarding the tennis initiative. I don't, I won't go into it right now, but I think that's a really great model to see about what resources there are. I agree with, with Miss Salisbury where, even though I think that it should be something that it's still school property in terms of programming and in terms of refurbishment, definitely see what local resources there are for that. So, yeah, if we can make that something to, to discuss in Buildings and Grounds, that would be great. Thank you, everybody that, that wrote in about that, too.
Dr. Kristi Howard, the HIB report.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of May, there were two HIV allegations. They were both nonfounding.
Sure, sweet, thank you.
Could have a motion on A2 for item 12A through D, the minutes?
Remove it.
Second it.
Move by Ms. Lozenki, second by Ms. Cook. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah.
Mr. Grillo?
Yeah.
Dr. Penna?
Yep.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Salisbury? Thank you, motion carries.
Oh, Madam President, just for one second, before we start the agenda, I wanted, I read today on, in the Coaster, and I wanted to congratulate the middle school soccer team for their championship. I didn't know if everybody knew, I saw it in the Coaster, a nice big article about the middle school and their championship, so I wanted to congratulate them.
Ax work consent agenda on all items from B1, not letter, 1 through B18, including three addenda items.
I'll move it. I'll second it, sorry.
Can we add discussion, really quick? So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the meeting that we spoke about before, since it's, part of it is on the agenda as an addendum. We recently met with the city of Asbury Park, we met with Deputy Mayor Quinn, Mayor Moore, Donna Viero, the city manager, and also representatives of the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative. I think we, it was a really productive meeting where we kind of got back on track, or we're getting back on track in terms of getting the tennis courts up and running in one of the locations that we had previously discussed, or one of the two locations that we were discussing. One was the area of the Barack Obama School property on Banks Avenue, and the other was looking at the high school again, to see if there was a spot there. We instructed Mr. Hastings to speak with the architect to see about an environmental study. Am I saying it right, that it's an environmental study, right?
I would style it more as a feasibility study.
Feasibility study, there you go.
To determine, you know, the wheres and the what would be needed, et cetera.
Right, right. But, yeah, I think once, and hopefully this will get the ball moving on getting some tennis courts and programming with the tennis courts for the kids in the community. And I'm really glad to see that the, that we're going to be, hopefully, if everyone votes on it, accepting this donation of $10,000 from the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative to kind of push forward with this feasibility study. So it looks like it would be three tennis courts at the Barack Obama School property. It says here, "as well as" the high school, but I think it means "or" the high school property.
Actually, Mr. Grillo, if I may, it's to look at the possibility of three tennis courts in two different locations. So for a total of three, but somewhere, you know, there may be one at one location and two at another location. So that's the idea, it's not three at each, just...
Okay, that's why I want to make sure it was written a little funny, but, okay, great. And so I just wanted to let the public know that this is moving, you know, that we've kind of reconvened and moved forward, and hopefully this will get us that much closer to having some refurbished tennis courts in the community.
Thank you.
Can I make, I just had a couple of comments, real quick, on some general items. I just wanted to, B13, number 24, Teach Rock, I just wanted to thank Eileen Chapman and the Springsteen Archives for this program. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our school. On B13, number 26, I like, it's glad we're doing another early college program for the students that are college-bound. And B1431, I'm glad to see that the cosmetology curriculum is already up and, almost up and running, and the students will be able to take a look at it to make their choices for the next school year.
One last thing on B13. Mrs. Ricks and I went to, I know, Mrs. Ricks and I did a walkthrough of the high school, and during our walkthrough, we actually met Dr. Malu, who's going to be, not Dr. Malu, what was the gentleman's name that is doing allied health? Right.
Just mention the staff member, knock my name, please.
Yes, okay, no worries. The new person that's going to be handling the allied health, I could say, and I'll speak for Mrs. Ricks, I think she was just as impressed, the allied health program is in really good hands, and I can't wait to see what the kids are going to do with that. Right? Yep. Thank you.
This is all items B1 through B18. Ms. Cook? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, abstain on B9 for A.
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on everything abstaining on B9, item number two, B12, item 21.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, everything except for B6, number two, and that's it.
Is that abstain?
Abstain, abstain on everything except, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm going to abstain on that one as well, B6, number two.
I'm abstain from B10, number six, B...
That's so nice. I know what that is.
Thank you for everything.
I forgot that was on the agenda, we're so sad. We wish you luck, though.
Salisbury? Thank you, motions carry.
Madam President, just a moment of personal privilege. Ms. Ricks, your microphone. As you see on the agenda, we've been really working hard to sustain our academic programs with the addition of the cosmetology program that went from actual theory to application to now hiring a staff member that will begin that program from our initial surveys of our eighth graders going into ninth grade. We have about 40 students that are interested in the cosmetology program, which by far would be surpassing some of our longer-standing CTE programs that have been here going on six to seven years. When we look at the sustainability of our allied health program, having 11 graduates this year, overcome some of the early obstacles, but I do want to thank the staff that chipped in, particularly the Black Nurses Alliance that came to the board meeting, that provided us some resources, which led to us having a physician come in to help support our students past the rigorous assessment and exam, to actually hiring a chiropractor who will be overseeing that program moving forward. And again, the belief that all of our students are entitled to these type of programs, to our expanding our early enrollment programs with other universities, Fairleigh Dickinson, as well as in the final stages of our early enrollment program with NJIT through our engineering The other highlight this year is our overwhelming early enrollment of our pre-K students that you actually supported on this agenda. We are opening up four additional pre-K classrooms, and if you understand the dynamic of the pre-K enrollment, it is a year-to-year lease. It is a year-to-year contract with those families, from the three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So for well over 100-plus families to sign up and renew their lease with us says that we are doing the right thing here. The additional rollover of our pre-K for students into our kindergarten classrooms is another indication that we are doing the right thing here, that our staff are working and that our programs, again, are exceptional. When you look at our full-day kindergarten offerings, again, a few years ago, when I was overseeing registration, we had a lot of students that were in our pre-K programs who were not residents of Asbury Park, taking full advantage of a free, full-day pre-K program. So we've cleaned up a lot of those things, but those families are committed to what we are offering here. And so I thank you for supporting the staffing, our programs, and the direction in which our district is moving at a rapid but a consistent pace. And our families, when you think about two of our students that were awarded this evening, both of those students are very actively engaged in the Student Advisory Committee, and their voices have been impacted in terms of our uniform adjustment, in terms of the configuration, which is on our website, and that level of student advocacy is something that we will continue to promote. And so even those two students that came to the microphone early in the year with concerns about the law on public safety, we enrolled those students in a summer program with Harvard University. So all of the focus that we have had and that we continue to promote is being student-centered. We are continuing to improve our process, again, being process-driven, and working on being outcome-focused. So we are no longer looking at just being stagnant in what we offer our students, and we will be looking to expand our CTE programs, again, next year, looking at another technical skill program that will, again, attract our students and our ever-changing demographics in this community of labor skilled and being able to provide them life options and to be career and college-ready. So I thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to present the business agenda with one note that on page C11 at the top. We're going to make a correction to Substance Awareness Coordinator, HIB Coordinator, the coordinator is going to be changed to Specialist. And I would just also note that we have Mr. John Venino, Ms. Joanne Major Phillips, and Cara Connolly, as well as HIB Specialists. With that, could I have a motion for C1, number 1, through C14, number 41? Mr. Grillo, Ms. Lozinski?
I'll move it. I'll second.
For item C1, number 4, letter A, how many days are they going to be using the facilities for?
It's 19 days.
A full 19 days.
19 days.
The application is July 11th through July 30th, and I believe the gentleman mentioned that up until the 20th, it's some prep work, and after the 20th through the 30th is actual events.
So the tents, so they'll erect the tent and everything on the 11th? You know what, I know we did discuss this in facilities, I mean, Buildings and Grounds, and I think that some of the, a lot of the information, I wish they had come and spoke to us about their program as to considering waiving fees, because the thing is, is that I know they had gone to the city, and of course, the city does charge, and I'm assuming they had said, when the email went back to Jeff, that they were going to be charged like $3,000 a day, so that's $57,000 if they were going to use Bradley Park. And I'm assuming the city would not waive fees because you have a lot of expenses, and of course, whether they can afford it or not is a moot point. So coming to us and using the facilities at the middle school, the 18-5, you're saving $19,000. I know, maybe in past years, maybe like six years ago or so, when the state wasn't cutting our budget, slashing our budget because of S2 and taking their money back, you know, maybe consider waiving a little bit. But at this point with, we don't have money to replace the fence at Bradley School soccer field, because the kids, you know, people are destroying it, I don't know who's destroying it. And the fact that that facility behind the middle school is going to be taken up by an event for 19 days, and the kids aren't going to be able to use it, and I don't think we can afford at this point to waive fees for everybody who asks us to waive fees. I know it's unfortunate, but we're in a financial crisis in this district, and we're going to see another $6 or $8 million after next year for a total of $34 million taken from our budget because of S2. So, you know, we have to raise taxes, and this comes out of the tax money, and it doesn't go somewhere else. Can't, we need to replace some of the stuff on the high school turf field, we need to replace the little pebbles or redo it. That's going to cost $30,000. This could pay for almost half of that. So I just have a real concern with that. So unfortunately, I wouldn't want to waive the fees because of the expense and the janitors overtime.
Right, and during the Buildings and Grounds meeting, I said that I could see, and especially now that I heard from the gentleman from the board or the Trenton Circus Squad, I'm okay, because they're, they seem to be, to have a whole kind of mechanism in place in terms of cleaning everything up, and they're not going to be using the restrooms in the schools, which was something that we had talked about in Buildings and Grounds. We said, well, they're going to be using the restrooms and all that stuff and all that. And, but at the same time, I agree, like, we can't just waive everything. I mean, I'm partial to waiving just the $3,000, also because it is a nonprofit, and maybe it comes from my experience as being a nonprofit professional for many years, and also because I read up on the program and the impact that it has on the kids. I'd like to see if we can vote, and I don't know how we'd be able to do it, but kind of bifurcate the two fees, so we can vote yes on one and yes or no on one and yes or no on the others. Can we do that?
Yeah, so since there's a motion on the table right now for all items, my suggestion would be that whoever made the motion, rescind the motion, make a motion to approve everything with the exception of that one item.
Right.
And then for that one item, somebody should make a motion to approve whatever it is that you'd like to approve. So if it's just the fee being $15,000 and nothing further, just make that motion like that and leave off the part that's not desirable for the board. The one thing I will say, though, and I'm sure this is already vetted through Mr. Hastings' office, is the certificate of insurance that names the Asbury Park School District as an additional insured is a non-negotiable, as far as I'm concerned from a liability perspective. So that would be required no matter what, that should never be waived. But other than that, the board is at it, you know, it's the board's pleasure, however you'd like to structure that approval, it's totally up to you.
I mean, would, I know we have to vote on it, but would the board be amenable, Madam President, to do that?
Why don't you try?
Hold on, one question. I don't feel like that's fair, because we don't waive the fees for the organizations that's here in town.
But we do.
All right.
Joe, you have to rescind your vote.
I rescind my motion.
Thank you.
Does somebody want to make a motion to approve all items?
Can I amend my motion then to include all items except?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for all items, C1 through C14, except for C1 for A?
Move it.
Second it. Second.
Questions, comments?
Congratulations, Adam, on your renewal. Oh, I, I did have a question. I saw that Mr. Hastings-
We have to vote, we didn't vote yet. We haven't voted.
I know, but there's something on there that I, I didn't understand in terms of Mr. Hastings, because it says here that he was reappointed to a few things, a few positions. Like Board Secretary and things like that.
Yes, am I?
Just one explanation of it.
Well, when he leaves, we have to give it to somebody else.
I'm sorry, I was, I was talking to somebody else. I apologize for not paying attention, Mr. Grillo. But if your question was, is Mr. Hastings still the Board Secretary? Absolutely, until the, the fateful day of August 11th.
This is all items in the C-section except for C1 for A. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on everything, I'm vote, except, I'm voting no on C1, number 4, C1, number 4.
That's not-
You're not voting on that yet.
Okay, thank you for clarity. Abstaining on C5, item 11. Abstaining on C4, item 9, I mean, item 9. And also abstaining on item 29, on C10 and C11.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, on everything.
Thank you, Ms. Salisbury? Thank you. Motion's carry. I think at this point, would the board like to amend 4A?
So I'd like to make a motion to amend C1 for A to, to separate the $15,525 from the, which is the custodial fees, and the $3,000 for the room area rental fees.
Well, I believe you're going to make a motion to amend, to just exclude the rental fees?
To just exclude the rental fees, right, correct. And just so we- So we have the rental fees.
Just so that everybody's clear, the rental fees total $3,000. So it would be $15,525 flat would be the rental.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? This is to approve 4A with the custodial fees, but not the rental fees. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
No.
Mr. Remy?
No.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
No.
Ms. Salisbury?
No.
Ms. Cook?
But I might have to go with no.
Motion fails.
Okay, with that, members of the board, because the motion failed, that essentially does not grant the Trenton Circus Squad the ability to use our facility at all. So to the extent that, now, the way that that motion was made was, it would be $15,000, $15,525 flat, no custodial. That failed. So right now, there is no approval for the request, if I'm not mistaken.
Unless they agree to pay the $18,525.
Right, so there needs to then be another motion now. If you actually want to have the circus squad come to Asbury Park, a motion needs to be made as it's written here, essentially.
Right.
I just want to make everybody aware, I want to make everybody aware that as of this moment, they're not coming, but now you're going to make a motion that they do come.
I mean, I want them to come, so. Make a motion to approve the, the agenda item as written.
Second, please.
I'll second.
C1 for A as written, Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yep.
Mr. Remy?
Wait, hold on. So if we say yes, that means we're waiving their fees and they can use it?
No, no.
We're just approving that we want them to be there.
It's the original resolution.
Okay. All right, yeah, they could come, but they got to pay.
Excuse me, the original motion that you're voting on is the approval of the fee waiver.
Oh, so it's the fee waiver, that's what we're, yeah.
No, wait a minute, I thought it was, we're-
Nah, it says to waive-
I'm changing my vote to, what's the original, I'm mixed up now.
It's they can come, but we would waive their fees.
No. They have to pay.
So can I, so can I withdraw that motion, and I will re, I'll, I'll say it this way. Make a motion to approve the Trenton Circus Squad to come and have their event with, but having to pay the fees that are stated, custodial and both, both custodial and rental fees.
Second.
All right, lady, ladies and gentlemen, the board. After conferring with Mr. Hastings, this motion is not necessary because there's already an approval for the Trenton Circus Squad to come here and pay all of the fees. And so to the extent the board is not going to give them a discount, if you will, there's no action for the board to take right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, stop mixing us up, Adam.
I apologize profusely.
You know, I'm going to abstain from that, from that renewal.
That's, we concluded the business agenda.
Board members, I wanted to make you aware of the item that I placed before you. It was the yearbook as well as the Animals We Love book from Mr. Paul and Ms. Carreras' class from Bradley Elementary School. Principal Jackson Byers wanted to present that to you all. So you have both the yearbook from Bradley Elementary School as well as the additional book as a culminating year activity. That's all.
Sorry, that is not over yet, we have to go into exact. So whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for the exclusion for discussion, I'm sorry, from the discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters outlined below. And whereas the open, I'm sorry, the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when proper conclusion has been reached. Now, therefore, that be resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on this date, June 22nd, 2023, at Asbury Park for the purposes outlined below, personnel matters, and to receive attorney-client advice.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ladies and gentlemen, the public, the board's going to be going back into an executive session for personnel matters. The board will not be taking any formal action in executive session. The board will return to, to this public session, at, at which time it's expected that the board will adjourn the public meeting for the evening. It's expected that the board will be in executive session for approximately an hour, perhaps more, and we will return afterwards from executive session to this room, at, at which time the meeting will be closed.